I'd like to call the Hingham Board's selection meeting for October 24th, 2017 to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the board's last regular session, which was on October 5th.
Move to approve the minutes of 5 October, 2017.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You good? Public comment on matters not on the agenda. Okay, the first item of new business this evening is the South Shore Country Club feasibility study group update. That's a long title, Jay.
It's a long title, just me.
Please.
Is the crunch like a sympathy thing?
I was gonna bring both, but I thought maybe that would help. Well, thank you guys for having me in tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the feasibility study and where we're at. It's been a busy couple of months for us. So, last time I was in here was about the mid-August when we got approval from you guys to sign the contract with BHNA, the company that we contracted with to do the feasibility study, and they pretty much hit the ground running that following day. It's been, you know, a couple of months since then, and we've really enjoyed the relationship that we have. I had the opportunity to put together a work group that's helping me with the feasibility study. Obviously, the CCMC has been a big part of it, you know, but I put together a work group that's kinda helping me with the day-to-day aspects of it, and that group's made up of Dan Cofflin, Jerry Seelin, Roger Fernandez, and Tom Malinari, Bob Curley, Kerry Ryan, Warren Pelisser, Bill Friend, and Rod Gaskell, both who are with us tonight. So, I have a real powerhouse team of people that are helping me, and they're not, we've only got together as one big group once, and I'm kinda utilizing each one of them in their different ways, you know, they all have different strengths, so I'm kinda using each one of them in that way, the best way that suits them. So, for tonight, what I wanted to do is go through a couple of things. What we've got so far is, we received some deliverables from BHNA. The first thing I want to go through is we received a deliverable on an update to the existing pool, and then after that, I'll go through the presentation that they gave to us on some different site options and different variations of what we're looking at at each site. So, the first deliverable we got from them was an update on the existing pool. Obviously, I've been in here a number of times over the last two years or three years talking to you guys about the pool issues that we have up there. You know, we have some significant cracking that's required some Kevlar straps, and we have basically a monthly engineer, a structural engineer that comes in on a monthly basis that does an update on crack monitoring and looks at whether the cracks have moved, if they have moved, we have to, you know, come in and do some work to keep the facility safe for every year, and we get certified every year and stamped by that engineer that the pool's safe and ready to go. We've been able to do that for the last few years. But what we wanted them to look at the existing pool and say, alright, although we have no, like, you know, building plans for the existing pool, and there's really even sketchy information about when it was built and how it was built, what would it take to fix it? You know, like, what would it take for us to fix it? Because obviously, before we start talking about whether or not we want to build something new, it's important to know, like, could we just fix what we have? And what would that look like? So, they spent a bunch of time, they contracted out with another structural engineer and our structural engineer to take a look at the different options. To really do an in-depth analysis of it would involve a lot of money and a lot of work because it's unknown what the concrete pore is that it sits in. So, they've used some assumptions based off what they see from the naked eye, and the long and short of it is, to be able to put together a plan to rehabilitate that pool and repair it, in their opinion, would be, it would be more, it would cost more than building a new pool, is where we're at. You know, I guess that kinda wasn't too shocking for us, but definitely, once they put it on paper, and we've had the opportunity to share that report with you guys, and it's right, it's right in there, it's clear that, you know, at the end of the day, if we took the money to rebuild and repair the existing pool, what we'd have is still a seasonal outdoor pool that is, costs us a ton of money to get there, that's only open for a few months, and still has a short lifespan. You know, so, I don't want to say we've thrown out that, looking at that moving forward, but that's definitely something heavy that weighs on us when we're looking at it. You know, everything that I say today, as far as this, where we're at with this feasibility study, could change. We could have, you know, get new information. We're only about halfway to three-quarters of the way through the feasibility study, so new information could come out that would change our direction, so, you know, what I'm presenting tonight could change, but that's, you know, obviously, we're not gonna spend a lot more time looking at, do we want to fix and repair an antiquated structure that, you know, what we're looking at for pools are all different opportunities of different family recreational pools, indoor pools, stuff like that. If we fix that pool, we still have, you know, a 25-yard lap pool that's used for mostly recreation, which is not, if you're gonna build a recreation pool nowadays, you know, it's not a 25-yard lap pool. There's different ways that families are looking for recreational swimming, so, so that's the information that we have on that. You know, the site is definitely an issue for us, too. You know, when we're looking at moving forward with different locations, we're trying to look at how the traffic flow of the club is, the impact on the parking lot, the impact on the golf, and, you know, there's definite issues with that site. You know, we did look at that site as one of the four that I'm gonna talk about right now, and I'll explain why that site has got, you know, lots of issues, and why rebuilding it there would be probably not our best, in our best interest. So, that's where we're at with the existing pool. We received that report yesterday, so I shared that with you guys. So, the next thing, we had a meeting about a month and a half ago, BHNA came in, I put together the full group of the work group that I have, and they went through, you know, what they've got accomplished so far. The first part of it for them was looking at the site as a whole and identifying locations where a new facility could go. So, we have it down to four locations that we're looking at on this, on the, on the site, and I think we have a slide here to show it to you guys. Maybe?
It's down in the back.
Bill, can I steal that?
Might just need to warm up.
Oh, yeah, it's warming up. Alright, so this is an aerial photo of the club. You guys are obviously extremely familiar with the, with the club and the different sites that we have here. So, there's four sites that we're looking at. The first site is the Bishop's Lane site, they call it, is our entrance way, right when you come into the club, the front lawn area, as we always call it, where we've utilized it for different activities. So, that's the Bishop's Lane site. The second site is the existing site. The third site is where the tennis courts are currently, and the fourth site is down where the lower putting green is, the practice area down by the driving range. So, those are the four sites that we have, that we've looked at, and I'll go through really briefly the positives and negatives of each site. The Bishop's Lane site, although it's a fairly flat site, a very flat site, that would be easy to build on, immediately drew concerns. One of my, we have a CPC application in, which I'll talk about, and my project manager on CPC is on the planning board, and immediately, when she looked at it, she had some issues with the site, you know, and I think that they're definitely real issues as far as streetscape and what people are used to seeing. It's also in 100-year floodplain, there's, you know, wetland issues in that area, and the last, the last piece that we looked at with that site is that it doesn't fit an indoor and an outdoor option, which is one of the things that we're looking at. So, it's a very limited site as far as that option, but it's something we had to look at because it's a big, flat area right there. And I think one of the aspects of the club that's really strong is the streetscape. I mean, you know, we need to do some work on trying to clean up what you see when you look up the hill, but it's beautiful when you look at the front of the facility with the two green lawns there. So, then we looked at the existing site. You know, obviously, there's some synergy associated with, if we were to build an indoor pool at that location where you'd be able to walk directly from the indoor pool into the bowling alley, into the restaurant, never having to go outside, but there's definite issues with the parking lot and the way the traffic flows with golfers, with restaurant patrons, and the hill, basically, that we're dealing with, the grade element on that site. So, when we look at, I think those things are too challenging to overcome. The only benefit is the fact that it's tied into the indoor of that facility, and we've had multiple situations in the last few years where, you know, I don't know how this happens, golfers are horrible, but people have actually hit golf balls into the pool, you know, over the last few years. One woman got hit. Nobody at this table. But it's a, it's a, you know, it, it, what we're trying to do when we look at this whole thing is try to make smart decisions moving forward that don't impact negatively our other operations, and that's something that in the past, I think, happened when they made decisions up at the club. You know, they just kept building on building and building on and on and on to this facility. So, you know, for those reasons, that site's one we're still looking at, none of these sites have been thrown out completely, but that, you know, there's definite negatives there. Also, that site would really only work for an indoor solution, not an outdoor family pool, without having to really impact golf. So, then we looked at the tennis court site. You know, right off the bat, the first thing people say is, well, we just redid the tennis courts three years ago. We used CPC funds to redo the tennis courts. I worked with Roger on that project. We made it clear to CPC at the time, that was a five to 10 at the very most lifespan for that project. We did the right-way crack repair system. You know, we were told by many, you know, engineers at the time that the thing needed to be crushed and rebuilt completely, but we were able to, for short money, buy ourselves 10 years. So, although I'm definitely, you know, I like the tennis courts, they get utilized quite a bit, we have to look at that site. You know, when you have, when you're three years into a best-case scenario, 10-year lifespan, you have to look at it as a site because it's another flat location with parking around it. We would have to go into where the woods are behind it to be able to fit the indoor-outdoor solution, but it's one that we're still looking at. It's a potential opportunity. You know, if it's not used for the facility, maybe there's other, other things we could potentially utilize it for, but, that said, since we rehabilitated the tennis courts, they're, they're being utilized more, you know, they get used more often, so, you know, it's kind of an if you build it, they will come with the tennis. I mean, I know we have a lot of tennis courts in town, but these are starting to pick up in popularity, these three courts. So, then the fourth site that we're looking at is the practice green site. You know, right now, I'd say that's our favorite location, and I have another slide to show you. So, that is on the, on the other end of the parking lot, the upper parking lot, down where the lower putting green is. So, basically, the site, and I'll bring it up on the next slide, would, would utilize that putting green location and the sand bunker location there, and the idea would be, 95% of golf courses in the United States, when you go to them, the putting green's next to the first tee, not a quarter of a mile away on the other side of the property. So, you know, ideally, what we would do is clean up the existing site where the, where the pool is, and build some sort of smaller structure to house carts, but then build a putting green and a chipping area down in that area, which is right next to the first tee. And that would dramatically improve the streetscape, too. When you look in, rather than seeing the barbed wire fencing and the chain-link fencing, you'd see beautiful green grass all the way up to the facility, and it would make the golfers a lot happier, too. So, that's a site that we're looking at quite extensively right now, and that's the next slide. So, that's this site. So, they presented this type of scenario for each one of the sites for us, so we can analyze and look at, but for tonight, I wanted to just show you this one. So, that's the putting green site. One of the things that I love about this location is that they use the existing topography and the existing, what's there, to try to fit it in. Like, you can see, and you can kinda see it in the aerial that I showed before, but there's a knoll on the golf course side, and there's a hill on the opposite side of the family pool, and they actually found a way to situate the family pool between the knoll and the hill, and utilize the hill for like a water slide feature that would, into the family pool. So, what you're looking at here is a two-story bathhouse that is accessed from street level, from the parking lot level for the first floor. You go into that, what we're looking at right now is the number of multipurpose rooms. We're still not exactly positive what those rooms would be used for, whether it's recreation, whether it's, you know, conferences, whether it's, you know, all different scenarios. We're really trying to analyze what works at this site with what we already have and what will help us generate the most revenue. So, for the topic of discussion right now, we'll call them multipurpose rooms. So, you'd go into the straight from street level, or from parking lot level, into an area where there's multiple, two multipurpose rooms, maybe a kitchen area or a restaurant area there, and then downstairs below that would be the locker rooms and the bathhouse, basically, you know, the locker rooms. So, then from there, you'd walk out of the locker rooms into the year-round pool, so that first structure is a year-round facility, you know, 25-meter, six-lane lap pool, so utilized for, you know, everything that you can imagine. Indoor lap pools are from, from swim teams to, you know, exercise, to adult fitness classes, to learn to swim activities. Year-round pool, and then you'd, you'd leave the year-round pool and enter into another concrete pore, probably one concrete pore where there'd be a family pool there. The family pool would be a zero entry, what we're looking at is like a zero-entry pool on one side, so that the little kids and handicapped people can walk right in at zero entry, so it's almost like you're at the beach when you walk in, and then it gets to a depth further out on the other side of the pool where the water slide feature would be. There'd probably be one mushroom. We're definitely looking at, not like a over-the-top water park type of thing, it's just one slide, one mushroom, you know, it's a pretty straightforward family pool. What we've been told by the BHNA, and it really makes a lot of sense, is this is what people are looking for. You know, the lap pool serves a definite, like, a group of people that are pretty passionate about swimming, but what the majority of people are looking for is a summer recreational family pool. That's what we have, that's what we've offered at the country club since the town bought it in the 80s, and that's what they're used to having, and this is just a better version. I'd say 80% of what we do up at the club right now, as far as swimming, is recreational swimming. It's from noon till dark, seven days a week. You know, they come, they swim, this is just a better way for them to facilitate that, and a more fun environment for them. So, that's the, the site. You know, when you walk down there, it's definitely got a feel. You know, I had a site visit with CPC on Saturday, we all, I brought them all down there because you can really see it, how it would work in that location. It's a really neat opportunity for us there. So, that's kinda where we're at right now. Those are the positives and negatives with each of the sites. You know, the next steps are the financial feasibility, so therein, I should probably have that, you know, ASAP in the next day or so. What they've done is, I worked with this financial analyst that does recreational financial planning, and we looked at all these different sites, like, if you had the Bishop's Lane site, if you had the practice green site, if you had just an outdoor pool, if you had just an indoor pool, if you had an outdoor and indoor pool with no recreational space, or, you know, the recreational space is something we're really not trying to focus too much on, we're just looking at multipurpose and how that would work, but, you know, that type of scenario, like, all these different parts. So, when we look at the financial feasibility of it, what makes the most sense? You know, what, what could we do that will generate the most revenue? And how will that tie to our expenses? So, that's the financial part. That'll be the next part that I bring to you guys. Probably not, you, you don't want to see each and every, we'll try to hone through it and try to put together the best scenario and bring that back to you as far as what makes the most sense moving forward. So, that's the financial end of it, that's our next step, that's the next thing I'll have for you. Meanwhile, simultaneously, what I'm working on is I applied to CPC. We wanted to figure out a way, I worked with Tom and Ted on trying to figure out a way, and Bill, on how to keep this project moving forward in the timelines of CPC, because we look at CPC as a partner with us right now. You know, it's clear that they were very supportive last year of this project, and so we wanted to continue that relationship. So, we put together a CPC application to look for construction document money for this year. So, whereas last year, we were in front of them for feasibility study money, we're back this year for construction document money. What really makes the application cool, and I think will help them really get into the project and get behind us on this, is we're only looking for about half of the money that we need for the construction documents. We've made a clear upfront, we're gonna fundraise for the other half of it right off the bat. So, we're not looking for them to fund the construction documents, just a portion of the construction documents. We had the opportunity to put together, or I, you know, a group of concerned residents put together a 501(c)(3), the Friends of the South Shore Country Club, to help us with this fundraising opportunity. Warren Pelisser's the president, Christine Smith is on it, Kevin Burke is on it, there's a number of great community residents that got on the board to really help us try to, they started it from scratch. John Cofflin was able to volunteer some time to do the articles and incorporation for us, and the idea is, the fundraising is a huge component of this project, no question about it. You know, right off the bat, it's clear that's one of the only ways we'll be successful with this work, and is if we can get fundraisers that are really passionate about it, really want this project, and help us move forward. So, they, the first thing they're committed to is helping us with these construction documents. So, it makes my case at CPC pretty strong when I can go in and say, you know, we're, we have these group of people behind me that are willing to go out and beat the bands and get the money needed to get this construction document stuff going. So, that kinda lines us up to continue this project and keep it moving forward, so that by the time we're ready to go, we have a shovel-ready project. We know exactly how much it's gonna cost, we know exactly what we want, and it's a shovel-ready project. So, that's kinda the last part, is the CPC. You know, obviously, I'll be in front of them in November, we had a site visit on Saturday, it went really well. Also, in the last month, we've put together a PowerPoint presentation that I'll share with you on why we think it's important that the, the country club belongs at the pool, the pool belongs at the country club. You know, there's lots of synergy with our other activities and lots of the other things, and we never had, we've talked about a lot of those synergies and how, you know, how much money we think that the pool helps bring, you know, how many golfers come because there's synergy with that, same thing with the bowling, birthday parties, how much the restaurant, how much revenue is driven in the restaurant by pool patrons and swimmers that are coming up on, to the patio after swimming on Saturdays and Sundays. So, we really wanted to try to quantify that into a document, so we put that together for you guys, share it with you. But it definitely, you know, there, to us, the South Shore Country Club is more than just a golf course. You know, it's clearly part of the community, it's a pool, tennis courts, bowling alley. You know, there's not, there's no place like it in Massachusetts. We're very unique in what we have as far as our offerings up there, and we think if we can make this work, we want to try to do it. You know, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's gonna be a community decision, so, that's where we're at.
Jay, thank you. Paul or Karen, questions, comments?
I mean, to me, it's incredible how, how you've moved this project along in a relatively short period of time, both in terms of your work with the engineering firm and, and your work with CPC and the, and the private philanthropic efforts, you know, to come at this with all those prongs, I think, in a short period of time is impressive. You know, a couple particular site questions. I noticed the, the wetlands buffer, I'm assuming you're on the, on the right side of that buffer?
Yes, yeah, as far as the Bishop's Lane site, you know, I think that definitely would be subject to conservation jurisdiction. You know, that's one of the drawbacks with that site.
But in this one, where we're beyond the wetlands?
Oh, in the practice green site, yes, we're beyond the wetlands, yeah.
And what is the location of the, the putting green and driving area? What does that do to the, is it the 18th fairway coming up there?
So, the hard lines that I gave them when we looked at it is the driveway or the, the car path leading down to the driving range, so it wouldn't impact anything on the 18th hole side of that.
Okay. And you were, so, two more questions. One, the, the multipurpose rooms that you talked about last time and this time around will be on the first level of the bathhouse?
In this, in this design, yeah.
Okay. And then financial feasibility will come next?
Yep.
Kind of mixing, matching all of these components?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Okay.
Hopefully soon, like, in the next few weeks.
Okay.
So, we'll be back in another month or so.
And I've said this more than once, I think that, that it just makes it much easier to, I think, understand how we're gonna not only afford the project, but, but continue to pay for the operation of the facility with, including this financial feasibility component, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Very nice presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hilly.
What's the area where the present pool in, being envisioned to be used for? Should this materialize?
I envision some sort of small cart barn. Right now, we store all our carts outside, I have 70 brand-new golf carts. Fortunately, this year, I had the opportunity to work with Randy Sylvester and hopefully store some of them in one of his facilities for the winter, but we have 70 brand-new carts that are outside all the time. We, the golf course itself has some debt that's fallen out, irrigation debt, amazingly enough, 15 years have gone by, it's paid off after next year. So, the golf course might be in a position where it can take on some debt to build a cart barn in that area, but definitely, absolutely, the cart barn would be smaller than the pool, and the main thing that we try to do with that area is putting green, short game practice area, cart staging, to really look at how people, how golfers enter the club, you know, where they have a bag drop there, putting green there, carts staged there, and really look at, right now, people show up, they have no idea where to go. So, our goal with that area is this is an opportunity to fix that and try to change how people enter the club.
How do you calculate parking and determine how much additional parking you're gonna need for this proposed or contemplated facility?
So, fortunately, that was one of the things we asked for in the feasibility study, and they contracted with PAR Engineering, which is a traffic group that's been out, they came a bunch in August when we were really busy, they've come when we're quiet in September, and part of this whole thing is a parking analysis and traffic analysis, too, is how it would look at South Street and issues there. I haven't got that part back yet, but that's...
Okay, so that's yet to come?
Yet to come, but it's part of what they, we contracted. Actually, when we interviewed them, they brought in their traffic consultant, and, you know, there's all sorts of ideas that they have, I mean, like, wow, we had a funeral up at the club a couple of months ago, and we utilized parking across the street with shuttle buses going back and forth. I mean, that wouldn't work on a day-to-day basis, but, you know, over at Bear Cove Park where the, the fields are, but we're trying to really think outside the box, like, you know, what would work in different scenarios, and that worked that day. You know, obviously, it's something you have to plan in advance, but, you know, that's all part of the, the parking and traffic study that we're doing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Jay, thank you, and I really appreciate the project process here. I appreciate that you're going beyond the country club management committee, which is a wonderful committee, but you folks also have a lot of the day-to-day, so I appreciate that. I'm also very grateful to the citizens who have stepped forward with the fundraising because we're gonna need the community's help on this, and I also appreciate that you're coming back on a periodic basis because we're gonna get a lot of information, and it just makes it a whole lot easier, you know, a whole lot easier to digest. I would just, you know, I echo what my colleagues have said, I think this is a really exciting project. I think as you're looking at the financing, which is a part that I'm particularly interested in, is, to me, what a lot of this is gonna boil down to is, it will be financially feasible at a certain point of usage. You know, it's, it's, I mean, there's gonna be some math involved here, but, you know, with a certain number of memberships or a certain level of activity, you'll kind of find out your break-even. So, as you're thinking about the design, as you're thinking about the use of perhaps multipurpose rooms, I hope you keep an eye towards what will promote the greatest intensity of usage, and it's going to be a little challenging to predict that because this will be a year-round facility, and so, you know, how many, how many more memberships might there be to the pool? That's, that's hard to know, but you've got some great help, you know, from people thinking about it. As I think about a winter kind of pool facility, it strikes me that part of the challenge that we have in Hingham is that right now, you probably have a lot of residents who have a Y membership, or a webs membership, or a Weymouth Club membership, and will that family take on a second membership at the country club, or will they say, we're, we're only gonna have a membership in one thing? So, to me, some of the challenges, you're thinking about the layout and how to use the space, is what would, what would compel people to have, you know, to have that membership? I don't, I don't have the answers, but I think you've got, you know, a lot of really smart people who are gonna help, and just one other thing about sort of some of the fundraising, and I can't remember if we did this with the high school field project, but clearly, the operating expenses of this project are gonna be greater than the operating expenses right now. I wonder if perhaps there's a way to look into fundraising where, you know, 90% of the money that's raised goes into the project, but 10% goes into some sort of a fund that gives you the ability to, you know, ongoing maintenance, repair, or, you know, some...
Some sort of endowment.
Some, some sort of an endowment that you could have, because, you know, we've talked for a long time about, wouldn't it be great if the country club got to the place where you had your own little rainy day fund? Because you are susceptible to rain more than about any other department in the town. And, and we haven't gotten there yet, so, you know, I understand that there are some years when a lot of forces out of your control create a lot of anxiety. Bigger facility, bigger expenses to cover, bigger anxiety. So, how do we, you know, is there a way to do that? That may involve a conversation with council, but I, you know, I think we should sort of think about that because, as Karen said, the ongoing costs will be significant, too.
Yeah, and that was one, one of the conversations I had with the financial analysts is that there's operations pool facilities in the country that do exactly that, where they have endowment set up so that the fundraising gets paid out every year to help with the operational costs. So, I think that's a model we definitely need to look at.
Yeah, yeah.
And also, as, as far as the pressure that you talked about with the club and being weather-dependent, one of the things that drives us is, like, we have these real dead months in the winter where we're not bringing in a lot of revenue, and then we're so dependent on June, and to be able to turn this into a facility that operates truly more on a year-round basis would take away a lot of that anxiety with the fiscal year running the way it does in June. You know, it would, it would no longer be, you know, 60% of our money coming in the last month of the fiscal year, you know, it would be more broken down throughout the year. And that's something that Tom and I talked about the other day, so I think it would help a lot.
Terrific. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question or wishes to make a comment about this? Okay. Jay, thank you. We'll look forward to having you back in the next few weeks. And Rod and Bill, too, thank you and the rest of the committee for all your great work.
He gives a lot of time to the Country Club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the Coast, is a coastal camera project presentation. And I think I see our Assistant Harbor Master and our Police Chief in the audience. Joe, welcome. And I, I understand you had a significant event since we last saw you and that you got married.
Ah, yes.
Congratulations.
This past Friday, thank you.
This past Friday, and Joe is here on a Tuesday night talking about cameras.
I think we're in some trouble.
Our, our best wishes to you and your wife.
Thank you very much.
So, just as, as a way of background for, for the community, this is an issue we've talked about a few times. And at the board's last meeting, Harbor Master Corson kind of walked the board through the protocol and the process for making sure that the information that's gathered with cameras is secured. The board had questions about to what extent it was retained, whether there was any sort of notification or signage so people were aware of cameras. And I think the board was satisfied with, with the process and the protocols that were in place for that. So, here tonight, we're, is a request to potentially add its, its two cameras?
Two additional cameras, yes.
Two additional cameras. So, Joe, maybe you could summarize what's in this document for us, if you could, please?
Yes, so, this is the memorandum of agreement with the Mass Harbor Masters Association to basically get access to two additional cameras through their coastal system that they're setting up currently from the New Hampshire border down through the canal. And what this does is this gives us the access and control of the two cameras that we're looking to put in. One of which is in, actually located in Hull, looking into World's End, and the other one is on Weymouth Port, which will be looking at the Back River and the ferry terminal.
And both, are either of those cameras installed right now?
They are not.
Okay, so, we would be installing them? And have we, I think I saw a note in terms of the other communities, are they, are they in agreement with this?
Yes.
Joe doesn't know this, but, well, Weymouth had already approved it. Hull was waiting, we were in a little bit of a chicken-and-egg scenario. They were waiting for us to approve it, we were waiting for them to say it's okay to put it in. I spoke with Phil Emneos, the Hull Town Manager, tonight, and he said, "Yeah, it's fine. If you guys do it, we'll put it in."
Yes, and we do have the agreement with Weymouth Port to have equipment on their roofs.
Okay. Paul, questions?
Karen, do Weymouth and Hull also have access to these particular cameras, or are these under our...
These would be under our control. It is a multi-agency that, for these two cameras, we would decide if we wanted to give them access or not.
According to whatever the, the protocols and the...
Correct, yes. So, the Harbor Master is designated as the administrator for our two cameras.
Okay. And I appreciate the time that both you and the Harbor Master spent compiling the information that, you know, many of the questions that I, I've raised over the last, you know, several months. I particularly appreciate you highlighting the differences between the Coast Guard or the Mass Harbor Association policy and the current Hingham policy. The one thing I'm, the one thing I'm, it won't hold up my vote, but the one thing I'm still a little bit concerned about, and it doesn't seem like it's material numbers, but the program seems a little wishy-washy about if the stuff breaks and we need to fix it, it's at our discretion, or like, the user fee maybe is $200. Like, here's what I don't want to happen. I don't want to, I don't want to opt into a program, right, that we're saying, "Oh, this isn't going to cost us any money," and we get the benefit of being able to see into two highly-trafficked marine areas with these cameras. And then, all of a sudden, you know, we have expenses on our plate that we didn't anticipate. So, that's my concern.
Yes, and so, the, the cameras themselves won't be owned by the town, they're owned by Mass Harbor Mass Association.
Okay.
So, they're the ones that, if a camera were to break, would be responsible for replacing it.
Okay.
The only thing that the town would own is the workstation itself.
The board thing, yeah.
And there's no obligation to have that running because what Mass Harbor Mass Association is concerned with is that the whole system works, not so much that the people in it can definitely see it. So, say that computer broke and we couldn't repair, we wouldn't need to.
Okay. And the user fee piece of this?
So, the user fee is because it's owned by the Mass Harbor Association. And they have, it's set at 200. And then, say that were to go up significantly, we couldn't do that, which, right now, we can't with our current budget, then we could always opt out of the MOA.
Okay. So, if it, if at some point it becomes a material increase in your budget and it's not, it's not something we can sustain, we have the ability to, to make that decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this? If not, I'd accept a motion.
That we sign the memorandum of agreement with the Massachusetts Harbor Masters Association, Inc., regarding the Port of Boston CCTV system.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Joe, thank you so much.
Your honor.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay. The, the last order of business before appointments and reports is, is the welcoming statement, and I'm imagining that's why most people are here, and so, we thank you for being here tonight. I want to just set a little bit of context for this discussion, and then, we will have a bit of discussion with the board. We will then open it up for comments from the audience. After we've heard comments from the audience, we'll probably close it back and have some discussion here. It's the board's intention to vote and take action on this item this evening. Just by way of reference, the way that, that this, this piece of business came to the board's attention is that, back in the spring of 2018, there was a citizen petition, Warren Article 2017, excuse me. Long day. And it was, it was a petition that was not, that was not actionable, the board had raised some concerns. We also had a really long discussion about it, and, and what seemed to emerge was that many of the concerns and sentiments that, that drove this issue to come up, in many cases, represented some practices and some policies that the town has been following for many years. What we said at that time was, "We'd like to take this up after town meeting." At that point, we had a lot of time-sensitive information, and we're very grateful to, to everyone who said, "Let's take this up after town meeting." During the summer, that's what we did. And, you know, we did this kind of the same way we did the Hingham maritime lease, or the Bear Cove Park dog restrictions. We involve staff and some of the people who bring this issue to us. And when it gets to the point where there's some language that is, you know, ready to share with the board and the public, it comes to a meeting. And that's what took place on October 5th. But the other thing that this board, a practice that we have, is that, is that when we're entering into something that we think has a great deal of public interest, we try not to take it up and vote it on the same night. We want to have an opportunity for people to be engaged. And on this particular one, I think the title on the agenda welcoming statement, perhaps to some folks, it wasn't clear, so all the more important. We proposed some draft language on October 5th, and for the past couple of weeks, we've gotten public comment. This is, this represents 80 emails, letters, some of them came into our office, some of them came to us individually. With the ones that came in individually, we, we put those into the file, and last week, our office compiled all this so that we could, so that we could read everything that was here. So, again, we're very grateful to those of you that are here tonight, who gave us your feedback, as well as to people who are not here. And I would say that the public comments, as always, give us a whole lot to think about. And so, that's, that's kind of where we are this evening. Earlier today, one of, one of my colleagues, Ms. Johnson, had taken a look at the original statement that was considered on October 5th, had some thoughts about that. Those drafts were distributed to Mr. Healy and myself late this afternoon. We haven't had a cha, we, we haven't had time, nor are we allowed to talk about that until we get here. But I, I thought it might be helpful to ask Karen to share some of that first because I thought it might inform the discussion that we're going to have tonight, and it may also inform some of your comments. So, Karen, let me turn it to you. And we've got the screen because we thought it might be helpful to put some of this up where everybody could see it.
Maybe that, yeah. So, as Mary said, first of all, I thought it was really gratifying to read the comments and commentary by a number of folks in town. You know, and I, I don't mean to disparage the, the dog leash issue, but this is an important issue for us as a community. And, and again, it was just, it was nice that people were willing to voice their concerns and their opinions, I think, in a constructive and thoughtful manner. And, you know, we take very seriously our role in kind of sifting through public commentary to help inform us as to where the community is on a given issue. And, you know, as Mary said, it helps our thinking evolve around the issues that we're discussing. You know, sometimes when you're, you're just in town hall, you're just in town hall. So, that part of the process is, is really important to all three of us. So, you know, we each spent time with those 80-plus comments that came in, we made phone calls, I made phone calls. You know, I sat with the language for a long time. We consulted with legal counsel, we, we talked about that at length at the last meeting. We got an opinion from legal counsel with respect to federal law and consistency with executive orders around immigration status, for instance. I consulted with the Chief of Police and the Town Administrator. And then, I kind of backed up and looked at my job, or what I view as the job of the Board of Selectmen. And it's with that lens that I thought about crafting the language that you see on the screen. And so, sort of in brief, it really doesn't change, I think, the sentiment of the initial statement. It, it talks about, I think, respecting human rights and dignity as sort of the outset. That's, we're a welcoming community, that's what we do, that's who we are.
Do you want to read it? Because I think the, the font up there might be difficult for some...
Okay. Teriate it, okay. So, so here's what I did, and don't, you know, no pride of authorship, I was trying to sort of structurally think about it in categories. So, the first was that we're welcoming, the second was about the provision of services, and the third was our jurisdiction as a municipality. So, I said, "The Town of Hingham respects the human rights and dignity of everyone we encounter regardless of their race, age, religion, country of origin, gender identity, sexual orientation, or physical and mental abilities. We are a welcoming community. The Town of Hingham is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of all residents through the provision of municipal services. To that end, we encourage all residents to seek assistance and, from all resources available to the community, including services provided by our police, fire departments, our Recreation Commission, and our schools. The Town of Hingham is committed to fostering a sense of community consistent with our town bylaws and the laws and regulations applicable to municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's who we are, that's what we do, that's our job."
And, Tom, I don't know if there's a way to perhaps enlarge the viewing, you know, to zoom in a little bit, or maybe even bold that, bold the, the text to make it a little bit easier for people to read. We were very understanding that we might have a big crowd today. We located the meeting here in this room, and we wanted to have that up on the screen. So, I apologize that it is difficult, that it is a little bit difficult to read. Paul?
Give me a moment. I think I'm going to...
What? You would like to hear from...
I'd, I'd like to hear from the audience. I have thoughts, but I'm going to hold on expressing them.
Tom, thank you. That's, that's a big improvement. We can also see it, there is a monitor about halfway down the room on the wall as well. So, again, you know, we have our original statement that many of you have already spoken about, the language, and, and I think my colleague is, is also for consideration. I think at this point, what we'll do is open it up for public comments. So, when you, when you come up, if you could, please, we'd ask you to come up to the podium and use the microphone, that's to the benefit of the audience at home. If you could, please, give your name and your address, that's also helpful for the records that we keep. I would ask that if you could, please, direct your comments to the board. And lastly, we're, we're interested in comments, but if at a certain point it feels like some of the comments are starting to repeat themselves, we may close the discussion only because the board does have executive session business that it needs to take up this evening as well. So, with that in mind, yes, please. Yes, please.
I just have a request. My name is Kathy Swanson, Kimble Beach Road, and I was just wondering if you could read the original, so that we can compare what we're seeing now with the original one, okay?
Thank you for asking. "The Town of Hingham affirms that it is a welcoming community and is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of all residents. It respects the human rights of all and pledges to provide education, health, and other services to all residents regardless of their race, age, religion, country of origin, gender identity, sexual orientation, physical and mental abilities, and immigration status. Every Hingham resident is encouraged to seek and obtain assistance from all resources available to members of the community. This includes police assistance and protection, education and recreation services, and other services offered by the town, as well as all other departments, commissions, and agencies. Town employees and departments do not routinely inquire into the specific immigration status of any person encountered during normal operations or when seeking benefits afforded to Hingham residents." So, that was the statement that was for the, given for the board's consideration on October 5th. Yes, please, Ms. Swanson.
Yeah, so, I guess my question is, can we discuss the original?
Absolutely.
So, would we discuss the, the new one first, or the original one first, or how we'll discuss?
I think we can talk about them both.
At the same time?
Yeah, sure. If, if you have a comment on either one, we just didn't want to, we wanted to put that out there at the beginning of the meeting for everyone's consideration.
Okay. I think the original one is closer to the intention of the group that initiated this, this discussion.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kate Nelson. I live at 14 Pioneer Road. I would like to know if this proclamation has any legal effect, and if it does, if it has any legal precedent that would be binding on the town? And if so, as pointed out, this is a very important issue, if the board intends to put this proclamation on the ballot for the residents of the town to vote on versus making a decision this evening without the input from all the residents that live in the town.
I'll maybe answer the procedural question, and I might ask Mr. Mayo or Karen to speak to the legal piece. This is a, this is a proclamation that the board is considering, the board, when it would not require a town meeting vote. I think it was, I, I can only speak for myself. I think a discussion on the floor of town meeting, I worry that it could be divisive. I worry, I worry mostly that it could be divisive. So, could, could one of you perhaps speak to the legal question?
Sure. So, as far as the original pro, or proposed proclamation, the Town Council opined that there was no, that this did not meet the threshold of a sanctuary city proclamation or declaration, therefore, we would not be at risk for any federal funding, if that's the question. As far as, as far as legal implications, I would suggest that both versions, and this new version perhaps more clearly, simply denotes our current practices.
No, I, I understand what the board is presenting. My question is, what's the purpose behind it? If it has legal effect and legal binding on the town as to how it's going to act in certain circumstances, does the board intend to allow the residents to vote on such a proclamation?
I guess I, the, the statement is... I guess I, the, the statement is consistent with the Massachusetts Constitution, you know, it's not a, we're not taking a position that's, that we could, that anybody could take otherwise. We are, we are simply stating how municipalities work in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, you know, I, at, in, at the risk of saying, you know, undercutting our action, because I think sometimes it's important to say who we are, and that's what we're doing, but it doesn't change, it has no legal, no legal effect on the operation of the town, if that's your question.
So, it's just a statement as to how the town intends to continue versus...
Carry itself.
I'm sorry?
Carry itself.
Carry itself versus a proclamation that would be pile the bylaws, all the rules and regulations of the town. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please. Yes, ma'am. Oh, sir, I'll, I'll get you right after, if I could, please.
I'm Gail Ryberg, 3 Oak Crest Road. I think the new statement that Karen came up with is very acceptable. I had a lot of problems with the original one because of the immigration impact. I wrote some notes down to say, and I will probably refer to them, because I, if we're going to talk about both, both, you know, and I wanted to keep my thoughts straight, so...
Thank you.
I, you know, I totally like the new one, but these are my objections to the previous one. In 1858, Abraham Lincoln said, "A house divided against itself cannot stand," and as we know, a civil war followed. Now, America's trying to get together again despite many differences that divide us for the good of the country. Why is this divisive statement promulgated when there's finally an attempt to enforce our immigration laws? Do we, as a town, want to be part of a nation united by laws, or do we thumb our noses at the rule of law and undermine it? The intent of this statement is clearly to say our town will look the other way if the issue of immigration comes up. You explained how it came about, so I won't go back to that, except to say that the original one was signed by 31 people. But I believe that the, even though this one, the second one that was written, that we had a copy of before, although the intent of the sanctuary petition and the state, and the, and the statement basically are, have the same intent, to avoid the immigration laws, and I don't believe the majority of Hingham citizens support this. I think it's hypocritical, hypocritical, because on one hand, we're going to say we act, we can act like a sanctuary city, but wink, wink, we won't call ourselves that if someone questions us, because we still want federal money. We just don't want the responsibility of obeying federal laws that disagree, we disagree with, but we'll take the money. Illegal immigration is illegal. Why reward illegal activity with promising privileges? I think the wording of the first statements would bully and discourage officials from questioning immigration status if they should have to in order to perform their duties. We cannot tie their hands with, from acting with nice sounding buzzwords like welcoming and inclusivity. We shouldn't substitute emotions for truth and platitudes for reason. Most of our ancestors immigrated to America legally, and they wanted to adopt its core values, because these values are good, values like respecting the law and not breaking it. So, I urge you to vote or table down this misguided and dangerous statement, the first one. And again, I urge you to support the newer one.
Thank you, Ms. Ryberg.
So, so, I, just, can I respond to it a little bit? So, you know, you're not alone. We received a number of comments sort of along that line, and again, when I sort of, when I put my Board of Selectmen hat on, the way I read the first statement was really about what's the jurisdiction of the town with respect to federal law. And that may be a little antiseptic, and it comes out in a little antiseptic way in the second statement, but to me, when I read this, that's what I looked at. What's the job of the town, what's the role of the town? And so, when somebody calls the fire department, we don't ask you if you've evaded your federal taxes. When someone goes to the library, we don't ask if you've engaged in violations of federal securities laws. So, there's a whole litany of stuff, and so, part of the reason why I took out immigration was because there's a whole litany of stuff that's just simply beyond the jurisdiction of a municipality in Massachusetts. So, you know, why enumerate one thing when there's, I mean, the, you know, chief can respond to this, there's a whole host of things that, that again, is outside our boundary, outside our jurisdiction. That's the way I read the first statement, and that's what led to the drafting of the second statement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you for this opportunity to, to talk to the selectmen. My name is Phil Bamas, I'm from 6 Colonial Road, up in Liberty Pole.
Could you speak in with microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Okay, my name is Phil Bamas, I'm 6 Colonial Road, up in Liberty Pole. Of the two statements, frankly, I prefer the, the original statement. And in part, it's because of the way that the town functions, as you described. We don't check immigration stan, status in providing the services of the town. Of greater concern to me is the necessity to set a tone for the town, and for the way that, that we function as a community. Recently, President George W. Bush made a statement that I think pertains to this proclamation. And his statement was, "Bullying and prejudice in our public life sets a national tone, provides permission for cruelty and bigotry, and compromises the moral education of children." I think that really, for me, that really gets to the heart of the issue. The issue, in my perspective, from my perspective, is that we need to articulate the way we function as a community, and the way we function as a community, at times, I believe, is at odds with the national dialogue that we are all experiencing at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Jennifer Antonazi, and I live at 3-0 Road. I guess, even just a couple of speakers in today, it's clear that people have very different opinions with respect to how they reflect that, and to pick up on what you had said about this is, it's not necessarily the force of law, but kind of self-determining who we want to be, how we want to present ourselves to the world. That, at least for me, is a group identifier that will apply to everybody. So, I still am unclear why, you know, whether it gets voted up or gets voted down, if this is, you know, going to have that kind of impact on the town, why it's, it needs to, you know, beyond the impact of 80 people and, I guess, 31 people that signed the petition, or, you know, with all due respect, the, the people that sit, the four people in front of me, you need to open it up. There might be divisive opinion, there might be diverse opinion, but that's a great thing in American democracy. Everyone gets to come in, they're going to be able to vote, they're going to be able to say, "This is how I want, this is how I want to be defined as a member of your municipality or town." So, I don't actually see that as a bad thing. I am concerned about how this arose, in that it seems to have resulted from a kernel, a very small kernel, and was initially, in my, my understanding, maybe off, because there wasn't a lot of publicly available information that I could get before the, the hearing, but then was going to be decided by even smaller group without public debate or a public vote. So, that's kind of where my, my concern is. So, I get that it's not going to potentially change anything, it's more kind of a self-proclamation of who we say we are, but we're a pretty diverse group. So, everyone should pretty much have their opportunity to say and vote on whether or not they agree with that definition of who they are as a resident of the town.
Sure. Thank you very much.
So, so, one, one thing to maybe think about is, there's, again, sort of certain ways the municipality itself has to function, and then there are the ways that each of us as individuals within the municipality function. So, when I look at this statement, there's, I don't think there's anything here you could really change legally. I mean, this, this is, this is how a municipality functions in the Commonwealth. So, while we may hold separate viewpoints in our individual homes and our families, I just, because I, I'm a big process person, so I hear you, I hear you on the process. But I guess I'm not certain that process would, would or could change sort of what you're seeing presented tonight.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask, because we've, I'm going to just, I saw a few other hands, so I want to make sure that we get to some other people, and then I'll, I'll maybe come back. Yes, sir?
My name is Anthony George, 15 Blaisdell Road. I was a part of the small group that initiated the conversation, and I'm very proud of where we have gotten to tonight, as well as over the summer. Deborah and I met with Tom, and we met with the police chief, and we had a very honest and good discussion about the practice. The chief educated us on how the police currently conduct themselves. I think when we, when we think about the issues and some of the concerns that have led us to want to, to document and, and come forward and make a statement, we learned from the chief that the practices that the, the chief and the town follow are very much in line with how we felt. And within the rule of law, we talk about the nation of laws, the, the law states that in the case of a routine or services, that you should not ask for immigration status, that it is unlawful to do so. So, in meeting with the chief, in meeting with Tom, Tom took away the task to put together a statement. The original statement is what many of us commented on, and I think it would help us to accept whatever the decision is tonight, to know what was the tally. Do you have a sense for, of the 75?
Yeah, and, and I would also say that, you know, I don't think we necessarily go, okay, you know, 100 letters for and 50 against. I think, I think it was probably like 60, 40?
49, 23.
Forty-nine, okay, thank you.
Well, and, and, yeah.
Fifty to 23.
But I would say that, you know, I mean, I, I look at, you know...
So, majority was in favor of...
But, you know, the Bear Cove, I'll just say, the Bear Cove dog leashing, I got, you know, we got, Paul and I got 300 letters, probably 250 of them said, "Keep things as they were," and, you know, what we really all try to do is, is we obviously take, we take what, what everybody says into account, and to me, it's less about the numbers and more about the thoughts behind those letters, because every, every letter has some great thoughts in it. And, and one of the challenges, as one of the previous speakers said, we're a community of 23,000 people, and, and how do you say, you know, okay, this, these are, these are 80 people? And, you know, when, when we have town elections, we get 15% of the community that votes. And at town meeting, we're lucky if we get 700 or 800 people. So, in, in all these decisions, one of the very difficult things for me is, how do you take all the input you're getting and try to make the decision that you think is best for the whole community, when you're only hearing from a really small piece of the community? So, I would tell you that we got more letters in favor than opposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's important to keep in mind that what we, the spirit in which we, and I say we, Tom, myself, the chief, and Deborah, met that night, and we put, and this original, I'm much in favor of the original, as opposed to this, we haven't had a chance to comment on this, it hasn't gotten 70 or 80 comments, it's different than the original. I'm very much in favor of the original, because of, it documents, as we talked about, we have the opportunity to put down in writing what we expect our police to do, and it's, it's what we, it's what we are in favor of. To include the immigration statement was very important to us, because we're fearful of the fact, well, I'm not going to go into the whole federal and, and ICE and all of that, but we're, we're very much in favor of working with the police. The police follow this practice, we'd like to see the letter in its original. I, I'm very much in favor, and I know many of us are in favor, of the original letter as it was written, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Watson?
Hi, Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. What puzzles me about this whole debate for months is the underlying assumption that our national immigration laws are so flawed that we should purposely look the other way. And I can sympathize with the concern of a lot of immigrants fleeing, you know, death squads, fleeing all kinds of situations, and I'm not a law and order person in principle, but we do have systems for being vetted, for being admitted, for coming into the country. And there is inequity in one sense, if we're saying those who follow all that, fine, those who skip it, okay, we'll look the other way, and sort of conspire not to assist. And I grant that the town is not in the business of enforcing immigration law, and I can sympathize with the police being frustrated if somebody won't report a crime for fear that they'll be found out, but I keep thinking there's an undercurrent that says something is wrong with the requirements for immigration, that that many people with good reasons want to come skirt them, other than just saving time. And it's sort of like the Fugitive Slave Act. If you were against it, you didn't report escaped slaves you discovered, you just pretended it didn't exist, because it was a very wrong act, I mean, a long time ago. But we're acting that way, and that so many communities say, "We'll instruct our police not to get involved in this, because we sympathize with the would-be immigrants, and we implicitly feel that they shouldn't have to jump through all the hoops." And I don't know enough about the hoops at all, to know whether vetting takes months, whether the whole process can take years, there can be plenty of human reasons to go around it. I think we all probably have relatives some time back that may have gone around it. But I wish the debate would say, "Our town and other towns won't ask immigration status because we feel that the law that people may have skipped is unjust," if that's what we feel. And if we do feel it, then it's something to be modified, which isn't under the town meeting, it isn't under the selectmen, it's Congress, et cetera. But it just means, it just troubles me, there's a whole level of discussion about the underlying problems that nobody is getting into. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope I was loud enough.
No, we, we got you.
I'm having a whispering campaign here, I think.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please. Hi, Kathy.
Kathy Riordan, 9 Steamboat Lane. Just really a question of clarification. The major difference between this original that I just printed out this evening and did manage to get to read versus the, the modified version is the fact that the word "immigration" or, is not used. Is that correct, basically?
Yeah, and I, I think it sort of affirmatively states that, affirmatively states what we will do and what we, and how we do it.
Was there a reason? Can you kind of elaborate on the reason why the word "immigration" was taken out of this statement? Because it seems to me it, it does make a difference in terms of what the overt intention of the statement is. I mean, and it may be that there's a legal reason why it's just not a good thing to have in there legally in terms of protecting the town. I've been hearing sort of conflicting things about whether the police have the authority to even interfere in immigration issues or not. I mean, I think I heard it wasn't legal for them to do it, but then now I'm hearing the conversation that, well, that somehow with this original one, we would be prohibiting them from doing it. So, a little clarification around kind of the legal issues that, that have, I think, might have driven this, I mean, I, I think this statement is great, but I...
You know, I hear you, I hear you.
If there's some clarification, it'd be helpful.
So, you know, again, I probably looked at it too lawyerly or too antiseptically, because when I looked at what we had enumerated, and by the way, people said, "Why do we need to say all those things? Why don't we just say everybody? Why do we need to call out all these different classes?" And so, for me, I thought, "Well, I think we do need to call out the protected classes, because sometimes I think it's important to say the words so that they know we see them, whoever they may be," right? And so, then it was sort of a little bit like, one of these things is not like the other. Immigration status is not a protected class in Massachusetts, and, you know, again, it's a jurisdictional issue for me. So, you know, rather than try to enumerate where our federal, you know, where our municipal jurisdiction isn't, I said where it is. And so, you know, I get it, but I really had to, well, I was really looking at this language about, what is the job of your Board of Selectmen? And the job of your Board of Selectmen is really to run the town, to run the budgets. We don't, and purposefully haven't, involved ourselves in national political dialogue. We are a board for all of Hingham. And so, it was important to me to try to craft a statement that actually everyone could potentially get behind and welcome people. I didn't want, I guess from my own perspective, I didn't want people to be upset or angry about something that was supposed to be welcoming. And so, I hear you on that, but that's sort of the mindset I took. You know, different towns, different Boards of Selectmen work differently. That has not been what we've done, and I think it's been very effective in terms of the running of the town of Hingham.
I think, and, you know, and then we'll get back to any other comments, I think one of the things that I've noticed in a lot of the correspondence that we got was that while the intent of the language of the first statement was not to challenge existing laws, that was the impact that it had for some. And some of our neighbors and some of our fellow residents said, "You may tell me that these words legally are, you know, not in conflict in things, but this doesn't feel right to me." And, you know, that left a little bit of an impression on me, because I think that while sometimes we can say, "Well, that wasn't my intent," I think we do have to look at the impact as well. And so, you know, as I looked at a lot of the letters that we got, what I noticed was that for many people who wrote and said, "I have an objection," it was because they interpreted that statement as Hingham saying, you know, we're not, you know, they interpreted it in a different way than was its intent. And so, anyway, that, you know, I would just say that that got my attention.
No, we have to look at the impact, as well as what the words are on the paper. And I guess the other thing I'd say when I read it is, I didn't view it as, I didn't view the original statement as an attempt to thwart federal immigration law. What I looked at it as was trying to make clear to every resident in this community that they have access to services, regardless of that. Regardless if you've evaded your federal taxes, regardless if you've engaged in insider trading, regardless of your immigration status, you're entitled to services here. We want you to pick up the phone and call 911. We want you to go to school. We want you to participate in our recreational offerings. That's our boundary right there. So, but as Mary said, I think calling out sort of one federal status jurisdictionally at the expense of others didn't sort of logically make sense to me.
Ms. Voss, please.
Hi. Deborah Voss, 31 Liberty Pole Road. I am a little disappointed that the wording was changed. We did work on it for quite a long time, and I'm trying to come to grips with this. I feel as if the word divisive is, the use is ironic to me, because the whole impetus behind our statement was to combat the divisiveness that we saw, that, as I said here, the increasingly heated, toxic political rhetoric, the spike in hate crimes. So, I find it ironic that people are accusing us of trying to be divisive when we were facing such divisiveness. Now, I know that you're talking about your jurisdiction and not wanting to overstep it, but I also think it does take some political courage to take this step, and I feel that we should include the language, because people wrote letters, I saw many of the opponents' letters in the paper, and the editorial in the paper as well, and they talked about how content they were with how Hingham is. And we are too. And we do not routinely inquire about immigration status, and we do welcome people, but the marginalized people in this town, as one of the letters of the supporters pointed out, an African-American resident, he has felt the sting of it. We are mostly overwhelmingly a white, middle-class, straight, sexual orientation town. I understand that. However, we do not face the censure that so many of these marginalized populations face, and I felt that it could be our little beam of light. And I will be disappointed, I've got to tell you, if the other statement, I felt like we'd already, you know, weakened the statement we started with, and I understand why we were overstepping. It wasn't something that the police chief and the town council felt comfortable with. But at this point, I feel that it, some people accused us of, what's the word I used, spouting lofty ideals and cluttering our town offices with empty mission statements, as implied by some opponents. I feel as if this current statement is a little too much of that for my taste. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. I'm just going to go over to here first for a couple people that we haven't heard from yet, and then I'll come back. Ellen, please.
Ellen Waylon, 156 Prospect Street. I thought what Karen Johnson said tonight was very interesting. There's been a lot of call for a wider debate on it, but why set people up to say they want something that they can't have if they want, they want our local police to start enforcing immigration laws when it's, they're not allowed to? So, why open up a debate saying, "We'd like our police to do this," when, if you want your police to do this, you have to first get your state and your federal rules in order for the police to do it? So, a wider debate that could end up in something impossible maybe doesn't make too much sense. And then, the surprise of the new statement. I also appreciated the difference between, we have the protected classes, and we're just stating that, and that there was a feel that there was need to state it again, because the atmosphere seems to have changed. But then, I also think there might be a need to state what the role of municipal government is, which is where the immigration status comes in, and leaving it out leaves out half of what the conversation is, that there's a lot of confusion about what is appropriate at the municipal level, what's allowed at the municipal level. And I think that is why leaving in the immigrant status would be useful, that we'd be clarifying things that there's obviously a lot of misunderstanding about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
I think I saw another hand over here. Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Deborah Robin, 2 Foley Court. I've never spoken at this meeting before.
Welcome.
I think, I want to say that I'm in support of the first version, and I think it's an interesting conversation about immigration, which is obviously a huge debate in this country, and what is underneath that. And I think it's really hard to sometimes talk about what is really underneath that, which oftentimes is really code for racism, and that's a hard thing to talk about. So, I just want to be clear that I think some of what is divisive is a larger debate, maybe a moral, ethical, political debate also. And the irony, I think, is that I work, I live here and I work in Boston, is that compared to many other places in Massachusetts, we probably don't have a very sizable immigration population here. So, it's interesting and ironic at the same time, and also, I think, poignant, that we're having this discussion not about a community that is incredibly visible, or maybe they're underground. But I'll just bet that, I can't presume who's in this room, but based on what someone else had said, it's a fairly homogeneous group. So, I think we have to ask ourselves, "Why would it matter to make this statement, given that it's not really going to make a huge difference for most of the people who live here?" And I think that's the reason it should be supported. We know that Hingham is part of what's happening in Massachusetts and in the country. There are raids, you know, ICE raids in many other areas, not out of New England, and we live in a current climate of fear and hostility. And you can pick a group, women, immigrants, people of color, gay, lesbian, trans, but right now, if you're afraid to call the police or seek help, you're not going to do it. If you're afraid that doing that means that you're going to be taken from your home and your children, you're not going to do that. And when people don't do that, it hurts every one of us, because then we're not, none of us are safe. We already know that across the country, this is the reality, that people are not reporting crimes. If you're a victim of domestic violence, or you're sexually assaulted and you're undocumented, you probably won't call the police. That's not the world I want to live in. So, that's why I think it's important to be very intentional and be relevant for what is happening in the world. So, today, at my workplace, I mentioned to a colleague that I was coming here tonight, not really intending to speak, and I said that I had mixed feelings about the importance of this proclamation, even though I supported it. I wrote you a letter, I wrote a letter to the editor, and I work on these issues in my other parts of my life. And I said I didn't think it would make much of a difference, because I haven't felt that this town is as welcoming as it could be. And she said to me that she thought it was a really bold and courageous stance, that this statement, which she read, meant that Hingham was actually providing leadership about an issue that it actually doesn't have a direct investment in, in a major way. And what a statement to make. You know, people who have come before us in civil rights and taking a stand against wars, they felt really isolated and alone. But we wouldn't have social change if people didn't speak up. And so, you have an opportunity here to get out of your comfort zone a little bit and think about the statement that this makes. And she told me that she felt like it would resonate with other communities, who might face actual implications because of their diversity. So, I ask you to really think about that. And the person who told me this is a Mexican immigrant, and yes, she is here legally, but she felt like this was a really important thing for our community to think about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. I think we'll probably, after this, have time for one or two more comments.
So, I just, kind of, a little bit of a rebuttal.
Please.
I think that having sat here, I have a...
Are you speaking in the mic?
Oh, I'm not. No one ever accuses me of being quiet. This is a first. But with, I have a better idea than having sat here, kind of, the feelings that generated the initial petition. I don't, I do stand confused a little bit, though, because there have been some things that have struck me as a little contradictory. So, I get that this isn't changing the law or practice. This is what everyone's doing, this is not changing the laws of the town. But then I don't understand what we're doing in. So, if it's not really changing anything, if it's just kind of stating the status quo, then the real issue is, do we, as a town, want to proclaim it, and why do we want to proclaim whatever we're proclaiming? And again, you know, I do think that, however we couch the language, I think that there are very strong opinions on both sides, probably of this issue, that extend beyond the wording that's being proposed. And despite what you had said, that, you know, no one's trying to wade into the political fray, whether this passes or it doesn't, it is the larger political statement on the map.
Yes.
So, to that end, again, that's why I think that if we're going to do it, and people want to do it, and they want to stand behind it, I'm more for it from a process perspective. I think it needs to be done in a different way. And I won't restate the things that I said before, but that's just the additional statement.
Thank you.
So, you weren't alone in kind of, "Why do this?" There were a number of folks, a number of folks said, "Hey, I agree with the statement, but why do we need to say it?" And as Kathy Swanson knows, I was in that camp for a long time. You know, we're good. We're doing the right thing. Why do we need to say it? Why do we need to publicly proclaim it? And then, it dawned on me, maybe it's because I feel welcome, or I did till tonight, anyway. Maybe we're, maybe we need to say it because the stronger voices need to make room for the quieter voices. And maybe we need to say it because we want to make sure that folks do avail themselves of services, both from the public safety standpoint, as well as all the extracurricular things that this town has to offer. So, I definitely came around to, yeah, we need to say it, and we need to say it, in my view, now. I understand that the words that I've drafted don't say it the way you want to say it, and with the strength that you want to say it, and the particularity you want to say it, but my sentiment's there.
Yes, sir. Final comment.
My name is Ed Ryberg, 3 Oakcrest Road. I just want to say I am opposed to the first version, but I am supporting this one for a lot of the reasons that Ms. Johnson articulated. The topic is welcoming committee, or welcoming statement. That's a welcoming statement. Now, it doesn't have the word illegal immigrant or immigrant in it, but it's a welcoming statement. If that's the purpose of what all this was to start, in my mind, in my opinion, this accomplishes that. It doesn't start weaving in national politics about immigration, "We like it, we don't like it, they should be here, we shouldn't be here," but it does say that Hingham is a welcoming community to all residents. It doesn't say all citizen residents, it says all residents, which is what the original proclamation said. So, I'm fully in support of it. I have to admit, when this first all started, I was a little skeptical with the process and how this was all coming about out of the blue, as far as I was concerned, but I really appreciate the time that you all and the staff has spent in giving this some real serious thought.
Thank you.
And not just because I like the new version, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the other things I'd say is just, you know, people have sort of pointed out, this is words on paper, right? And what I've witnessed, I think what you've witnessed, is this is a community of kindness and compassion. When issues occur in this town, people stand up and they show up. And to me, maybe this makes us slightly more mindful of, as Deborah said, sort of marginalized groups that maybe we haven't reached out to like we should, or maybe we haven't embraced like we should. And, you know, maybe it'll give some folks food for thought as they carry on in this wonderful community.
I overlooked a hand, so this is the last, last comment.
Peter Swanson, 87 Campbell Beach Road. Both of my children are from El Salvador. They're adopted. One of them is light in color. Our son is dark. He's also short. And we always felt somehow he may be, at times, here in Hingham, being profiled. As a matter of fact, we often had discussions about how, if we lived in a different community, how he might not be subject to that. And so, David is in the United States Army, and we... And we just did a road trip because he moved from El Paso, Texas, to Fort Stewart in Georgia. And on this 1,800 mile road trip, I told David about this statement. And he said to me, why don't you ask the people that work in the kitchens downtown, how they feel about how they're perceived and about their welcome status? And so I think this statement sends a message, a tenor, to residents of Hingham who haven't thought about this issue, or who may be developing their ideas. David kind of made it because he became an outstanding wrestler. I fear if he didn't have that status in high school of how he would have negotiated, navigated his way through our town. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this discussion kind of for public comment and ask my colleagues, and I'm gonna kind of look to my right here and give Mr. Healy a moment to think about what he's gonna say, because you've been, no, you've been pretty quiet. So I'd like to hear your voice on this.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've been thinking about this a great deal, and I've been kind of dreading having to publicly take a vote on this issue. But this is where I see this. I see the events of the last national election ushering in a much more difficult conversation about difficult subjects. And I question whether we should be letting ourselves get drawn into this debate, this discussion, at a town level. I, like you, am a resident here in this town. I've sat on boards, I've worked for the town as, you know, an employee. You know, I became a selectman, figuring I'd make sure the roads get plowed and the streets are paved. This is a policy decision that I think is taking place where the air is pretty thin. Having said that, though, I see men like John McCain, Jeff Flake, Bob Corker, Barack Obama, George Bush. They're speaking to a hostility coming from on high that needs to be addressed. Having said that, though, while I was an employee of this town, I was a policeman. So my first concern was whether or not any statement that we made would affect the department's ability to serve and protect its citizens. Our chief has said no. As Ms. Johnson has said, town council has signed off on this. It's unlikely to have an impact with respect to the federal view of our town. However, I've spoken with high-ranking law enforcement officials in this state, outside of this town, who express a deep concern about going in this direction. I'm also reading the letters, although I did find it rather interesting, that one letter in support of this also found time to attack one of the members of this board in doing so, which was kind of interesting. But, you know, I think that this isn't, this isn't a town that overwhelmingly voted in one direction or another. And I think that there are people in this town that don't feel this is necessary. However, I do know I want to be a selectman that said, I'm unwilling to state a welcoming statement, generally speaking. And, you know, as I told you earlier in the spring, I have a family member who's an immigrant, just went through the immigration process. You know, he threaded the needle, he made it happen, it's difficult to do. I work in the criminal courts in an urban courthouse where ICE is a well-known player. I don't see ICE around in this town at all. So this is a feel-good statement for me, but I'm worried about the implications. I liked what Ms. Johnson has done because she's, she's grasped the spirit of what we're trying to say. You may not like, you may say it's watered down, but as another member in this audience who once served as a selectman, wisely stated at a public meeting not that long ago, we have to look at the interest of the entire town, and that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to satisfy the fears and the concerns that have prompted you to step forward. But at the same time, I want to be respectful of my role as a selectman and as a servant to the entire town. So that, that's where I'm coming from. You know, I don't think that we're gonna get unanimity on this issue in this town. I think that there are people who hold genuine positions that are contrary to the ones being advanced by the majority of the people in this room. But having said that, I think what my colleague has drafted up, again, at the risk of repeating myself, captures the spirit of what we're trying to say, that when you come into this town, you're gonna be treated fairly. Whether you're, you know, overstayed your visa in Haiti, or, you know, you're, you 've been deported and you've snuck back in from some other source. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Karen, anything to add?
I appreciate not only the letters, but, but the comments and the conversation that we've had tonight. In listening to this conversation, a number of things have jumped out, and I'll apologize in advance that it's not very well organized, but that's because as people were talking, there were kind of different, different pieces here. I think one of what you've heard from both of my colleagues, and I would share the same thing, is that, is that, is that when this first came to us, it was, it was unlike a lot of the things we get. You know, it's, it's not a liquor license, it's not a budget, it's not a pool at the country club. And, and I think we've all kind of struggled to say, what, what is our role in this and where are we? The expression I like to use a lot is stay in your lane. I always say that, you know, our government works pretty good when everybody stays in their lane. And I think for me, I've struggled with kind of, what is my lane on this? And as both a citizen in my community, as an elected official, and where I've kind of landed on it in terms of our role, is, is what someone said earlier, and it's come up a few times, which is tone. I think a lot of our role, and the reason that, that I disagree with people who say you shouldn't take this up, is that I think this represents an opportunity to set a tone for the town, and I think that's kind of needed right now. I have, I have children in the high school, and I, you know, being around in the community, I hear stories, and, and in particular from some of the youth in our community, where there are members of our community who feel marginalized. They feel marginalized, and it's, it's really awful. And part of me says, if we were to do nothing on this, we're sort of saying, well, well, that's okay, and it doesn't matter. So while I realize that a statement of this nature is somewhat out of, out of our role, I do think it's necessary for, for tone. I think I tend to agree with my colleagues in terms of, of the scope. I know for some, it may feel like we're not going as far, but for me, I see an opportunity to put something forward that many, many people can get around. And, you know, when, on an issue like this, when I hear words like, you know, there are opponents and sides to things, it, it, I don't want to put something forward in the spirit of helping tone that's gonna harm tone. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming out on this. And so I, I support the version that's, that's up on the board. I think it, it talks about what we have done as a community, and that's important to me, too, is we have, this is, this is how we have conducted ourselves. I will say, folks, that for many people, the fact that this is how we conduct ourselves came as a surprise to some. And there are some who disagree with this. So I'm also looking for the path that says, you know, where, where can we all potentially come together? And so that's, that's where I am. And I, I appreciate all of the thoughts and feedback, Karen. I, I know you've spent a lot of time wrestling through it, and it was helpful for me as well to hear kind of some of your thought process as well in this.
Thank you, Karen.
So, and Tom, our appreciation to you in the office as well for, for working through this. I remember that when the Bear Cove Park regulations came before this board, what came to the board, and then what we ended up adopting, was different. It was crafted. We, you know, we, we had what we thought was a good, a good, a good program, and then we adapted some things. And we adapted it based on what we heard from people and what we thought was our best judgment. With that, I would, I would accept a motion, and if, I might just reference the document number, so that we have that for the record. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we vote to sign the welcoming statement proclamation V2.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the list is appointments, and we have six appointments to make this evening. Thanks for coming, everybody. We'll just... Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So as, as, as the room is, as the room is clearing, we are going to be making some appointments this evening. And the first, the first order of business is an appointment to the Historic Districts Commission.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we reviewed the bylaw and the, the planning, the planning board, the planning board's able to give us an input on representatives to the Historic Districts Commission. We had names surfaced by the Planning Board. Jennifer Gay Smith, the chair, communicated those names to us, and as a result of that, I would like to put forward the name of Justin Aborn as an alternate member to the Historic Districts Commission. He would be the Planning Board nominee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next five appointments that we have are to the Compressor Station Task Force. And as part of the process of the board setting its goals for this fiscal year, we talked about creating a five, five-member task force that would serve as a group that would conduct research and provide research and information to the board, that would also take a look at the public permitting process and make the board aware of different points at which the town could potentially get engaged. And we had, I think, 12 people who came forward, pardon me, volunteering. We appreciate everybody who came forward. As, as has been the case with all of our talent bank, we have had more qualified, many more qualified people than we have available seats. The board actually had interviews with all of the candidates. There were a few candidates who were unavailable, who, who the board interviewed by phone individually. So we have a five, a five-person group, and my suggestion to the board tonight is that we, we would appoint a chair at our next meeting. Okay. I'd like to perhaps reach out to individuals, and I, I wouldn't want to designate anyone as the chair without making, making them aware of that possibility. So if I'm...
Can I just say, this was a great process, I thought. As Mary said, so many interested citizens came forward, folks that have spent a great deal of time on this issue. I think that, I think we, as a policymaking board, will be well-informed by this group. We were looking for kind of particular skill sets to, to sort of fill different holes so that we make sure that the information that gets vetted is in a format that, that we can utilize. Really, really important issue, and, you know, I think it's exciting to get to this stage, to put the, the folks together that can help inform us and drive, you know, drive policy by the Board of Selectmen.
And I would also add, what was also so impressive is that a number of, of citizens who really care about this issue have invested a significant amount of time developing expertise, participating in hearings. A number of people who, when we said, you know, what do you know about this issue? The level of engagement of, of many of the people was really remarkable, and it's, it's to the benefit of the community. If I may, I might lead off. I would like to appoint Mary Farrington to the Compressor Station Task Force.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Richard Norman.
Richard Norman?
Richard Norman.
Okay. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Turner Bledsoe.
Turner Bledsoe.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to appoint Kristin Casey.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I crossed something out. I'd like to also appoint Joshua Ross.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I'm just gonna read these names, Sally, for, so our Compressor Station Task Force members, Mary Farrington, Richard Norman, Turner Bledsoe, Kristin Casey, and Joshua Ross. And our office will be in touch with those individuals, and we will schedule a first meeting. And Tom and I have talked about, perhaps he or I, or both of us, would attend that first meeting. We'll also have the charge for the board's consideration at the next meeting.
Okay. You know, one other thing, in, in terms of the charge that we made clear to this group, and, and actually, some people self-selected sort of off consideration, is this isn't an advocacy group. There are a number of groups around the South Shore that are advocacy groups with respect to the compressor station project. This is a group that's really developing, vetting, and helping us think through the important issues in terms of where the town of Hingham can and should engage on this project. So a little bit different focus.
Okay. Tom, I think that concludes the appointments. Am I correct?
It does.
Okay. Next on the agenda is selectmen and town administrator reports. Tom, would you lead it?
Do we want to do the liquor licenses?
We got Tom Mayo.
Or no? Do we do that?
Oh, do you want to do those votes?
I don't care.
Okay, why don't we take care of those votes?
The votes.
Okay. I'd accept a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Downtown Association to close Main Street between Elm and North Streets and South Street between Central and North Streets, and use the sidewalks and tunnel cap for Christmas in the Square on Friday, December 1st, 2017, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Can you imagine the political outcry if we didn't vote for this?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the, all the sidewalks would be open.
Hopefully.
Could you handle the next two?
Sure. Move to appoint Tom Mayo as the Chief Procurement Officer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint Tom Mayo to the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would just say, for the benefit of the audience, in his capacity as the interim town administrator, these are roles that the town administrator holds, and it's necessary for the board to appoint Mr. Mayo to the, to that role and to that committee.
Should we do these liquor licenses?
We've got two more liquor licenses.
All right. That's my specialty, so I will move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Laura Glennon on behalf of the South Elementary School, for the South Elementary Parents' Social, to be held at the Hingham Heritage Museum on November 4, 2017, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Guy Reynolds on behalf of Galway Rovers, for the Galway Rovers Around the World Wine Soiree, to be held at the Hingham Community Center on November 4, 2017, from 6:00 Soiree to be held at the Hingham Community Center on November 4, 2017, from 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrator Report.
I can just tell you that briefly, I'm about halfway through the departmental reviews for the budget hearings, and all is going well.
Terrific. Thank you. Paul?
A few things. Met with the HDIC last night, and I previously talked with the Chair about some new initiatives. And the HDIC's gonna engage with the Director of Community Planning to start doing some spade work on the parking garage idea in the square. And we're also gonna do some, I'll call it community outreach, we were calling it recon at the meeting last night, but reaching out to the different surrounding towns and finding out what the permitting process is in those towns, who the players are, projects on the, on the board. So we have a better sense as to what, what is out there to potentially impact us. So that would be the towns of Hull, Situate, Wamouth, Rockland, and Orwell cohesive.
Oh, that's a great idea.
So I'm, I'm excited about that, and probably gonna put a little energy into that committee to make sure, you know, it gets rolling along. Something, and Working Group Meeting's gonna meet Monday. We anticipate signing off on the final report.
Great.
Dense reading, very dense, 60 pages long, and then some. And finally, while I was away on vacation, I had the opportunity to go to Charleston and Savannah, and they're both beautiful cities. And I was walking through the historic districts of those cities with my wife Esther, and one of the things that I saw, and I'm gonna hand each of you, were these little, Tom, you give one?
I have.
Thank you. So does this mean we didn't get a T-shirt?
No, no T-shirts. I'll send you a postcard next time. But what was interesting is that this top picture, these are awards that are awarded to the owner of the home with respect to preservation of the home, or rehabilitation with respect to both the exterior and the interior.
Oh, that's really interesting.
So I, I spoke to the town historian about that, and this is, this is a, an effort in Savannah in particular, that since its inception, they have restored and rehabilitated 350 homes, and it is absolutely beautiful in Savannah, the historic homes. And these awards aren't given out solely for historic homes. They're, they're just rehabilitating period piece structures. And, you know, I was hoping, and I spoke to Andrea Young about this as well, that perhaps we could incorporate something like this into our own community so that the homes within the district would be incentivized to, to perhaps go above and beyond what they're already doing, or those homes that are outside of the enumerated districts that we have would be incentivized. I mean, it's basically bragging rights, but I'll tell you, these homes are magnificent. And, you know, down there, the wrought iron is, is really superb, you know, and it's, it's very tasteful. But I just think that that would be something, you know, when, when you see the history of another place just so vividly displayed and tastefully done, it, it makes you really realize just how important our own historic preservation is. So, you know.
Well, and to, to provide recognition for those families that have, have taken, you know, sort of the next generation in preserving that legacy, I think that's a, I think it's great for-
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
True.
Karen?
Yeah, a couple of things. You maybe mentioned this, but there's a open house for veterans tomorrow, Thursday, beginning at 6:30?
6 o'clock, 30.
The Keith German, Patrick O'Connor, and Joe Moschino will be there with the, along with the Secretary of Veterans Affairs. So I think, you know, they're looking forward to great attendance by our veterans community here in Hingham. Mary and I, I may be stealing all her stuff. Mary and I went to a ceremony honoring Seaman Foss at the Fort Hill Cemetery. Really, it was a beautiful day. Cemetery was beautiful, and the ceremony was, was really, really nice. So it was a nice opportunity to honor, continue to honor, our Medal of Honor recipient, Seaman Foss. I also had the opportunity to go to a rededication of Russ Electric up on, up in the industrial park. So Russ Electric is a family-owned company that's been in Hingham for almost 45 years that manufactures electrical circuitry, including microgrid technology and, and clean energy systems. And it's, it's, it's amazing. So you drive back into that industrial park, they employ 200 people in electrical manufacturing up there, and they have for almost 45 years. So it was really an interesting display, and I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that. And then a couple of fundraising functions that I went to. One was the Woman Aid Coffee a couple Fridays ago. It was at the Heritage Museum. It was my first opportunity since some of the Historical Society openings to actually go to a function there. And it just, so it was sort of twofold. One, you know, it, it highlights the importance of Woman Aid, which is a, a local charity that provides bridge funding for needy families in the greater South Shore area. They work with our schools, our Elder Services Center, and Wellspring and Hull to provide that sort of emergency funding for critical needs before sort of more bridge funding can come into play. But it was also just beautiful, you know, and it's, to me, also very symbolic that those kinds of gatherings are now taking place in the square. So it was a beautiful day, and a, kudos to Woman Aid. And then last but not least, you know, today, I was in Boston, but I was at the Rosie's Place lunch, and the reason I bring that up is, there's a significant number of women from Hingham who make a commitment to go into that lunch and sort of witness and support women, helping women, particularly Jane Cringden, Linda Hooley, and Lisa Patterson, who were event sponsors. So great event today. And, you know, as I was thinking about what we had to talk about tonight, it's sort of that display of our compassion that warms my heart. So that's it for me.
Thank you. So three things. I want to thank Barbara Fernthal. I was invited to the men's breakfast in the senior center last week, and, you know, there was great company, and we talked about a lot of stuff for about an hour. Great questions, great engagement, great feedback. I walked out with a long to-do list, but every, every one of them was, was very good, and it was just, it was really great conversation. And as much as in that role, you're giving a lot of information, I find that you get just as much. You understand what's on people's minds, what people think about things, and it's very helpful, so thank you. I would just let the community know that November 11th, Saturday, Veterans Day, we will be having the annual ceremony here in Sanborn Auditorium beginning at 11 o'clock. That's on a Saturday, and it is always a wonderful program. And lastly, would just like to wish the Hingham High School football team good luck this Friday. They have a playoff game. It was a really tough loss to Duxbury. As, as someone said to me on the phone today, the Zebras had too much of an influence over the outcome of the game, but our football team is having a great season. And I was at the, I was at the last Friday night football game, and it was so wonderful to see how many families from Hingham, and a lot of young families were there. So I believe this is the last Friday night football game of the season, and hopefully it'll be a nice evening for that.
So Mary, if I could just jump in, if the way the Hingham Harborman treated my sons' Quincy Presidents on the football field, as any judge, I think they're gonna be okay in the playoffs.
And we're playing, it's Bishop-Fian, and actually, while Hingham lost to Duxbury on Saturday at homecoming, Duxbury is also in a playoff game, so there's a chance to play again. And that actually reminds me that this past weekend was homecoming, and if you had, had the opportunity to go over to the high school, you saw booster organizations and all kinds of clubs raising money, demonstrating spirit. And what's just so significant is the level of engagement and commitment of parents and students and staff to all kinds of things Hingham. So with that, the board is actually going to be going into executive session. We will not be returning, so I recommend the board enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to personnel issues, because discussion of these matters in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. We will not be returning in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night.